Seven, huh?
No, they're not seven, it's uh, from what I understand.
This person be doing one fundraising like?
Well, I guess that's, from what I understand is just to help out with all sports.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, for what I understand.
I feel like they do need to be more unified.
Right, right, so. We just asking you guys if you would uh, help out.
Can you send a copy of this?
Uh, in fact, in fact, I do have another copy in the car.
Yeah, my, my, I, I passed it up to you. See, I attempted to, to find it.
Yeah.
But when I got it, it actually printed out was this. And then when I printed everything up, y'all got this.
That's the way you said it.
Yeah.
But I, I do have another copy in the car.
Yeah, or you can just text it to me.
So we'll get that, that.
Okay.
I don't know if you have.
Uh, Thompson, you know my biggest uh, thing that, what the school board do? You know, what place fun, like, that'd be my biggest question.
Well, I, I can't really speak on that, cause I don't know what they do.
They have a tax that they trying to get.
They took, they have.
Next week.
That, that, that they trying to get uh, passed.
To get passed, yeah.
Right now.
So.
And when we look at what, what the funds was allocated, the first time, uh, you don't feel good about saying yes, I won't vote yes to this tax. Like, we gotta make sure the funds are, are being equally dispersed.
Well, but, I mean, this place, it was basically to just reach out to the local business. And so, you know, I said, well, we, we do have a local businesses ask the city to put out because you guys have been faithful of helping out. For, since I don't know where, so.
And, and I don't, I don't.
Yeah, we just put the school board on, we put them over here.
No problem, they have, they have, they play their part.
Well, I understand that too. We just put them over here and we'll try, we'll try to work with the local businesses, uh, first. I did get some good response off of Kamisha Dodd today, but gotta, we'll just wait and see how it go.
I think we could talk about the other five day later.
Okay.
But I did, when I saw him in the office, I did want him to reach it, and I didn't want to.
So they like, you know, there's no certain dollar on my own, like, it's like, what? And I think with so, ever when we do these type of things, I don't even say something about giving money, like donation and, with the donation, how does that go through?
The same as with the uh, nonprofits, you know, we enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement, uh, you know, to document it. And uh, you know, again, the, the city has to find that it's getting equivalent value for whatever funds it's providing.
And, you know, helping out our, our namesake high school.
Yeah.
We, we, the community benefit, you know, so that.
Yeah.
So.
But this is just kind of opening the conversation, and then we can, we can carry on, so we, I don't know if we want to put it on, make an agenda, I don't think, but I'll talk to him some more. And maybe we can discuss whatever y'all might want to do home next week. I was just trying to rush through everything, it's funny, I can't hear why, we appreciate everything. We look forward to all the great things that going on for the Christmas holidays, and then we got this Jeep parade, we got the other parade, we got just great things going on. Y'all get ready, cause for our senior citizens gala, uh, you know, it's gonna be on the eighth of December. And so, we'll have everything uh, packed up, but we can, it, look, it gives a more joy for the council people to be out there just handing the plates out to them. You know, it's there to, you know, our senior citizens are very important to us, so I want y'all to just mark your calendar for the December eighth, so we be ready. So, at this time, I'll take any questions if anybody's got.
But, uh, definitely want to say thank you to Councilman Joe for being an advocate.
You're welcome.
You know, we have a lot of people that talk, but they don't speak up and speak out and come through the hard work to get what we actually need, so I do commend you for coming up and helping.
I have to put some footwork in.
Yeah.
Thank you, I will, I thank you guys.
Look, uh, breast cancer, they have a breast cancer walk too, um, it's Stewart, October fifteenth. I do have information.
We got information, so we could put it on these on our Facebook page.
I can pass it along to, she sent uh, information to me.
Where is it gonna be?
It's October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven forty-five to eight is registration, eight oh five to eight twenty is the survival walk, the victory walk, eight thirty to ten thirty, the walk run begins and ends when the last person crosses the finish line at the Port Island High uh, School Campus, Guy Hartwell Field.
Okay.
Uh, and if you would like to recognize someone who has been affected by breast cancer, please submit their name, and she have that information here, so I can pass that along.
Please.
Uh, as well as, I want to recognize that it's mental health awareness month, along with domestic uh, awareness month. So, um, of course, me being a mental health specialist, I ask that you check on your strong friends. Who you may believe that they be strong, they may not be so strong. Uh, and to send out a message is okay to not be okay, it is not okay to not be okay and not get the professional help that you need. We do have a, a, a mental health agency here in Port Allen, that's local, is a resource for our community and surrounding areas, which is whole behavior health right here on Court Street. So. And I think that was it, that I had to mention, oh no, I want to thank everybody that participated in the fall fest, all the local businesses that participated. Like you said, Rose, it was, it was great, I enjoyed uh, organizing and planning, I thank the Port Allen Police Department, they were there uh, to oversee everything. God, thank God, there wasn't any, uh, any, you know, anything that went out the way, it was just pure fun, lots of fun. And uh, we do look forward to doing this again next year.
Fantastic. Okay.
We have a breast cancer parade Sunday, this Sunday, at two o'clock, that starts at Shallow Baptist Church.
I didn't get anything on.
Two o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, discuss recent district requirements as a result of the twenty twenty census, Mr. Saver.
Sir?
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Uh, elected and appointed officials, sorry about that.
What do you look forward to?
I've been to many places, so I know in the future not to touch anything when it come up. No problem. Good evening again. Uh, with four or two years of providing districted services, Dana Center is an experienced districting company in the state. I'm Cedric Moore, president and chief demographer, got to date my wife in Rose Floyd thirty-nine years, and she's been working with me. The twenty twenty census has been released. The city of Port Allen has a population of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, down from five thousand one hundred and eighty with the twenty-ten census, reflecting a population loss of two hundred and forty-one, or four point six five percent. Consistent with state law, Louisiana Revised Thirty-three Colon Thirteen Seventy-One, the population of the twenty twenty U.S. Census has been applied to the full city council districts. That is called the Benchmark Plan, that's before you. The starting point of redistricting. The Benchmark Plan shows that the four districts has a deviation of eighteen point oh six percent. How do you get deviation? That you take the, the city population of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, you divide it into four. That gives you the ideal district size of one thousand two thirty-five. Then you subtract the smallest district from the largest district. Uh, the largest district is District One, with one thousand three hundred and fifty-six people. From the smallest district, District Four, was one thousand one hundred and thirty-three of people. And it gives you a population of two hundred and twenty-three, then you divide two hundred and twenty-three into one thousand two thirty-five, that gives you eighteen point oh six percent. The goal for redistricting is having the four districts be within ten percent deviation, that's federal and state law. Before you is the Benchmark Plan, that Dana Center has applied the twenty-twenty census to your current districts. And we've been doing redistricting for the last four or two years, this census is undercomp. Because COVID happened during that time, so you didn't really have many uh, boots on the ground, uh, turning the census, so it's undercomp everywhere. So it's very well that Port Allen has a larger population than what stated, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, but consistently, everybody has had an undercomp from twenty-twenty census. With that, any questions are sold in terms of, uh, got for the registered voters, your map, and apply the twenty-twenty census to your council mete districts. And that's the comment that it lists.
When you say the deviation, it's plus or minus?
The plus or minus, if you're, when you, once you redistrict, you try to be within plus or minus five percent, and at, at the end, that'd be ten percent within the range. Yes, so that's how it goes. And before you is the, uh, what I call the Benchmark Plan, is a deviation of each district. It shows that District One has a plan, uh, variance of nine point eight oh percent, District Two, three point two four percent. I'm, I'm in your one, two, three, four, the fifth uh, column descent deviation. District Three, minus four point eight six, and District Four, minus eight point two six. Uh, the plan takes all four, so you do have two districts within the range, Districts Two and Three, but based on it being against, uh, next to each other, it might have to have movement, but what we come in and redistrict and try to do as least changes possible to come in with, uh, to compliance. Any questions concerning the Benchmark Plan? And this is total people and not uh, registered voters. When it comes down to redistricting, your next pick, this is standard criteria for redistricting. Which are population equality within ten percent, compliance with the Vote Rights Act. Your city compactness, but this is, uh, everything is within, within your city, so you won't have any troubles there. Each district shall be contiguous, I mean solid, you can't jump and have a circle, a circle for the next district across town. Incumbency shall be considered, consider, considerations shall be given to natural, geographical, and political boundaries. Number seven, considerations shall be given to keep intact communities with established ties, common interests, association, whether historical, racial, economic, ethnic, religious, or others. Your next qualifying for office is July seventeenth through the twenty-ninth, seventeen through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, with the primary elections being uh, November the fifth, twenty twenty-four. And state law requires we to finish redistricting four weeks before qualifying. Any questions so far?
So right now, the way we, we, our district, it wasn't, it doesn't have any effect on the current?
Correct, this will, right.
Only taking effect.
The next election, it will be the districts you qualify from, and when you take office, it will be that. So, these districts will go all the way to the last day of this term, which you currently in.
I think the candidates was interested in knowing.
Yes.
Knowing that.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Uh, with that.
So is the possibility that we, we, we will be, uh, to redistrict, like?
Right, you have to, because it's above the, the state at ten percent, yes ma'am, you will have to do some redistricting. In terms of adjusting the precinct lines, so all four districts together will be within ten percent deviation. Okay. I've submitted also a proposed resolution, that's party package. And once it's determined that uh, you, you're over ten percent, uh, state law requires you to do a resolution, uh, statement so. And a resolution states that, whereas the twenty-twenty U.S. Census count has been completed, in P L nine four dash one seventy-four, seventy-one, we just turned out, it was delivered to the state of Louisiana in August twenty twenty-one. And whereas the Port Allen City Council, under revised statute thirty-three colon three eighty-two F one, must make a determination, and this is your determination when it comes down to the Benchmark Plan, whether redistricting is necessary with the twenty-twenty U.S. Census population. Whereas the Port Allen City Council authorized the study to calculate the twenty-twenty Census population in East Council District. Whereas the city council, whereas the current city council, single member districts have the following population. And I so stated with, what I just said. Whereas the overall deviation of the four council districts is eighteen point oh six percent, with almost double the legal limit of ten percent mandated in federal law, now therefore being resolved that the Port Allen City Council hereby declares that a redistricting of the city council must commence to adjust the district populations to be within ten percent deviation of the ideal district size of one thousand two thirty-five. If found resolved, that this resolution shall become effective upon adoption by the Port Allen City Council. So it's just a quote, what we do around the state. And just want to give you some of the cities that we have worked with for this twenty-twenty census. The city of Winfield, Mansfield, the city of Natchez, we, in fact, we were there this morning, eight forty-five, in the city of Natchez this morning. Town of Homer, will be the Faraday on, on Tuesday. City of West Wigo, City of Amy, Winsboro, City of Franklin, City of New Rose, City of Jonesboro, City of New Iberia, City St. Martinville, City of Conchitula, Town of Haynesville, Town of Jonesville, and Town of Oldham. This is uh, the cities we have done this twenty-twenty census already. So, uh, Dana Center looks forward to working with you to adjust your city council districts to be within the state and federal law.
So, we will have meeting with you on within twenty-ten?
Yeah, it's gonna be one-on-one meetings, or meetings of groups, and uh, adjusting lines. I have a, a, a computer with a monitor, probably hook up to your big screen, and we'll go uh, and, and check it out and see exactly what lines have been changed. But the, this is the Benchmark Plan, this is applying the twenty-twenty census to your current districts, and it shows the population.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to uh, working with you on the, on the potential, thank you. Okay.
Can y'all put your, 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 that?
Yeah, I got the.
There's a resolution here.
But they don't vote tonight.
What I'm saying, are people put as an item next week?
Okay. All right, we're making a item amendment for, uh?
Yeah, I've submitted a contract to it. Okay? Thank you, thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Item number eight.
Call the personnel committee to order to establish a form, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hobart?
Here.
Mr. Gordon? Mr. Revere?
Here.
Fourth president.
Thank you. Uh, item number four, discuss Chief Hicks' recommendation to hire Jamie Johnson as a police officer. At step one twelve, grade A, forty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Good evening again. Um, Mr. Jamie, Mr. Johnson came, he filled out an application, uh, where I said he's part of, he sat down with me and Lieutenant Williams, uh, he spoke briefly. Um, he is a sharp, sharp uh, man, he has a lot, a lot of law enforcement experience. He uh, got out for a little while, he wanted to get back in, he was referred to uh, to us over here. Uh, his intention is to come in and, and help develop our department, and they can move forward. Um, like I said, his interview process went weird, he passed his matrix, and uh, he's here tonight, if y'all want to ask him any questions. Mr. Johnson?
I'm glad y'all took the mic, man, I ain't want to mess up. Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Jamie Johnson, twenty-seven years old, it's an honor to be here tonight. I'm rarely at uh, Port Allen, I come here often with uh, Masonic, uh, we have a lot of Masonic beats here, or Square Lodge number nine, off Mason as well. So I'm not too uh, familiar with your streets, you know, your people, not going to sell your dream or anything like that. But what I am familiar with is, ever since the new chief has become, you know, once y'all, once he was elected, the crime rate went fifty-four percent lower than the national crime rate in Louisiana. Um, some people might ask what that means, so when you have small areas like this, uh, from Winsboro, Louisiana, a population of maybe twenty-five hundred people. The smaller the town, smaller the city, the harder it is to maintain crime, like to prevent crime. So you're here to prevent all the time, when you're short-staffed, when you don't have the proper training, et cetera, it's hard. So, for me, when I came here to Port Allen, I was recommended here uh, by a colleague of mine, I spoke with the chief, uh, we had a great conversation, I went through the regular process. But my reason for coming here versus the options that I had, was because I can relate here more with my years of experience. Uh, starting off twenty-eleven, I started, I have two years of corrections, meaning I've learned how to deal with individuals in different situations without having to go with weapons, et cetera, uh, especially given the climate of, the police uh, relationship with the community now. Uh, de-escalation is my finest, uh, I also specialize in the legal system, meaning I'm not just a police officer that's writing tickets. I understand uh, civil rights, I understand amendments, I understand what we can, can't do. Also, my main purpose, like I told him, I want to bring education when it comes to articulation, when it comes to, when you arrest somebody, everybody know, hey, well, I was charged with this. But, like, I think, I think left, uh, one of the, some of the people y'all had here were saying, hey, the education, we don't have it. You know, so, I can arrest this individual, say, hey, you was arrested for this right here, but if you don't, if you're not able to explain to them what it was, in a way of, you know, this is what it was, it's how you prevent this happening next time, it's very hard to keep a good relationship with the community. So what I want to do is bring uh, the education to the department to enhance their, their knowledge, so they can better embrace the relationship between us and the community. So if I'm hired, if, you know, if you guys, I, I don't know how the meetings go, I want you to understand that I'm not here, I, I set out, I, I have a kid on the way, so I set out for a while, because we had one coming last time, chilling this carriage, so here I am, back. I didn't set out long, but I have eight years of not just chasing and arresting, I notice they show it on TV, but as far as community relations, uh, crisis intervention, I have over eighty hours of C I T training. Uh, heard council, Lacy advised that she was big in the mental health field. That's one of my main factors that a lot of people don't want to put on the main screen, they want to say, hey, it's, well, they do this, but you don't understand why. You know, well, he's fine with arresting him, he gets back out, he hadn't had any rehabilitation or what he's coming back to. Uh, I want to bring that also to the department, you know, and I know he's very over to it, uh, the train is almost free. You know, they have certain, certain uh, entities in Baton Rouge, Monroe, that offer them, that these officers should have, and it'll really bridge the gap between the community understanding why we do our job, how we do it, and us understanding why they act, how they act. And it kind of makes it more, not so aggressive, or, you know, however you may see it. But I want to thank you guys for having me on the agenda tonight. Uh, I'm not from Port Allen, from Winsboro, Louisiana, I carry and live six minutes away from the department. Uh, not here for the money, this is something I love doing, I've been doing this about eighteen years old, twenty-seven, I know you live, like, you young. But uh, humbly speaking, I'm great at what I do, I enjoy it, I'll do it for the money, but if given opportunity, you definitely have a, a great candidate to worship me.
Chief, you did it in Port Allen, you might have.
Hey, look, 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 my mom is a mayor in Winsboro, Louisiana, she tell you, I come to some of the council meetings, she made me, I can't do it. Like, I think it's not gonna cop so long, I'm too literal, and I'm like, I'm sitting here like, so.
So where, where were you, uh, employed before?
I was employed, so I started uh, my career, Rayville City Police Department, uh, that's in Richland Parish, maybe fifteen minutes from Winsboro, Louisiana. Uh, went to the Santanini Parish Sheriff's Office, that's where I was almost there, a year and a half, I did four in Rayville, uh, two at the jail, and, and a year and a half at the Santanini Sheriff's Office. The difference is a culture. Uh, some might say, hey, well, he come from a bigger department, he might not, not treat our community here. Everybody might be a little soft here, but the difference is, I came from a small department, from a small city like this. The only, the only, only uh, factor or variable, which is a positive one, me coming from Santanini, which is having uh, the understanding of, it's better education with our law court, with the law courts and everything, because they have the money to do, to send you. So, I have the community side, and I also have the, the logical side, which is the legal. So when you put that together, it's, it's just a great, it's a great, it's a great vision for the community, so that's where I came from, my last follow.
Haven't been in any trouble, any of those, any of those agencies, huh?
No, never been fired, never been fired. I resigned from Santanini Sheriff's Office, and that's when I came back to uh, Winsboro.
I like your character.
Thank you.
You're very strong, I, I hear the strength, and I see you in a place that we have, we don't have here, but you do have some background knowledge about the city, something like, and when you talk about the crime. We do have unsolved murders, and I can see you working with victims, because we don't have that, we don't have a liaison for communication. And I can see you working that scope, like, um, I like, I like the strength behind you. Uh, I'm gonna watch you. I can tell you, I am. Uh, I like mentioning the educational aspect that you looking at bringing, because one thing, I think is very important, that our young kids need to be taught how to act, or how to respond when you're being stopped uh, by law, you're by a police officer. I don't think we have enough education, you know, um, to kind of teach them what and what not to do, to, um, I'm sorry, you want some?
No, I was.
Okay, to teach them what and what not to do, uh, how to act and how not to act, cooperate. And, you know, I, I, I think that's just very important, and I, I, I believe that you can teach and reach the younger generation.
That's what I think.
Cause you look like them.
That's what I think.
And they need people that look like you, to be able to relate to them.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, uh, not to cut you off, anybody's on set, I'm not holding up, I know we been here for a while. Uh, but, I'm also a senior at Southern University, Baton Rouge Criminal Justice major. So all my courses are online, so it's not gonna flip and be working if I'm hired, but I also speak to the uh, the freshmen that take the, whatever, taking the pre-regs. It's a course called Policing in America, so everybody think when cops go through like school, they should be like, phew, they should know like every, nah. So we go, you have three and a half months, wrote to Chief, if I'm not mistaken, three and a half months, and they give you two weeks of legal. I want to make that very clear, that's why, that's why I spoke on education. You're not doing three months of uh, you know, like, law, I think I screwed up law school, it ain't, it's not three, no, 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 you get two weeks. So, it, it's on that officer afterwards, you know, and given the stress from this job, I'm gonna tell you, without having it within your department to in-house educate those officers, it's too stressful to say, hey, I'm gonna go home after I just possibly been spat on, slammed, belittled, shot at, and I'm gonna open a boot of legal, it's not gonna happen. So given that they're not putting that, they're not giving that to us, because Louisiana is the low, when I say the, the shortest schooling for law enforcement outside of Mississippi, given that that's the case, that has, that also has a lot to do with how the duties are performed out there, or it's not personal, it's not, some of us really just don't know. And given the, the relationship, we're not able to go understand, hey, why you feel that way, why this, it's, it's, I hate to say it, excuse my phrasing, it's like a war, because there's no logical peace. Everybody is upset about something, it's a reaction. So I think that, with me being majoring in that field, I get to see, and trust me, it's totally different than what we do, I don't know why they call it criminal justice. But it shows we more of the community's uh, opinions, that's what they, in criminal justice, all they showing you, because when you get to the streets, it's totally different. But I get to understand mental health, uh, different approaches, cultural diversity, which I've taught them before. Cultural diversity is a big thing that they don't want to teach in the academy, but that's one of the biggest factors about, if I'm not from here, and I said, this is the, this is way different to East Baton Rouge. If I work in East Baton Rouge, and I'm not from there, they don't, they don't care about it, they don't, police officer, I have to understand where they come from, why this is popular here, what causes the crime. And they don't teach us that, so I feel like, me being here, with his permission, with his guidance, I could bring that to the officers and then make the job a whole lot easier. Other than, I'm, I'm.
I like the way you project yourself, but so everybody knows, I only have first DMs on my suit.
Hey, look, I, I, look, in Winsboro, that's how, my momma told you, like, man, don't wear that same flex, you know, I said, I said, I'm a child.
If you can't get a Port Allen move, you try.
Look, look, but.
You got it, yes.
But no, I really appreciate y'all's time.
No, man, no.
You'll, you'll plan to talk to him. We can roll tonight.
Hey, both tonight.
No, I know. Okay, we can make dinner tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Item number five, uh discuss advertising for.
Okay, discuss advertising for baking part-time utility post position, you could resignation of Melissa Ferguson, Lance?
Yes, council, we were, you were previously informed, I think via email, of Ms. Ferguson's reservation, and we asked that this be made in a June item to advertise for that position.
All right, move on, item number six, the general.
All right, now. Item number one, call to order, item number two, establish court, item number three, roll call.
Here's lazy.
Great.
Mr. Hubble.
Here.
Mr. Brown, one president.
Item number four.